We're here for the winter retreat of the Caffell City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. Um, Ashley, did we have anybody sign up to speak? So I'm gonna skip over item number two. We go right into the agenda. Um, I don't, we've got a, you know, every year we do our winter retreat and it's, this gives the, the staff the direction for planning on the next year, twenty five, twenty four, twenty five. And it also allows us to see what's going on in our own minds and kind of set our strategies. We'll do a little bit of talking about that tomorrow. Um, but you know, this is, this is where we do the long range planning and give staff direction for the short term. So very, very important. And thank you everybody for being here. Um, I, uh, we'll get, we'll do that one later. I was gonna talk about, we've got an upcoming event that's a once in a lifetime event on April the eighth. And it's a solar eclipse and I listened to a briefing on it yesterday and it was, it was, I didn't, I didn't realize what the impact was. So we'll talk about that one later. Um, let's get on with the agenda. Item number three is a discussion, discussion regarding the vision twenty four, twenty forty prioritization. And, uh, I see Tracy's name here.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in first, Mayor.
All right.
If you want, um, first off, thank you all for being here. I would have put the evening and tomorrow.
So who are you?
Mayor, who landline?
This is Randy Pennington from, I've just found out, Carrollton. Um, I think when we first met you, you were in Farmer's Ranch, if I remember.
Yeah, I was Farmer's Ranch. I've been in Addison. I've been in Carrollton.
You're still trying to find the right place to live, huh?
Everybody keeps asking me to move on.
So Randy's here to, to be a neutral voice in our discussions this weekend. Um, he's very familiar with the city of Caffell, has dealt with the surrounding communities around us as well. Uh, and is well qualified to, to hold our discussions. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good to see you all again. And, uh, first off, I wanna go through the agenda for tonight. And this will be, uh, I think a fairly easy agenda. We're already past item two, we're at item three. We're gonna get three, four, and five done tonight very quickly. We'll move as quickly as you would like to move. So we want to be as thorough as possible without belaboring things. Uh, and so we'll move as quickly as possible. We will stop, assuming that, uh, you go a couple of hours or so, I will stop you somewhere along about halfway through and say, would you like to take a break? Now, in the meantime, if you would like to take a break before we get to the official break, we understand. Please go and we won't stop unless four of you leave. If four of you take a break at the same time, then we're broken, okay? At that point, until everyone gets back. Is that fair enough? As we go through the day. So, uh, one of my very favorite jokes of all time, what does a snail say when riding on the back of a tortoise? That's because perspective matters. And so I wanna try to frame the night up with some perspectives. The first one is this, Henry Clay. And I think this is something that we all have to remember. Henry Clay said, government is a trust and the officers of the government are the trustees and both the trust and the trustees are created for the benefit of the people. First and foremost, I wanna make sure we do, we all do the work in the city, fair enough. Uh, secondly, presence should be guided more by the future than the past. Now, the past is useful in framing up how we look at things, but we are charged with this to create the future of the city. If we think about it, there is a reason that our automobile windshields are larger than the rearview mirrors. It's not the flex in the back, doesn't have value. It's just what's out front is more important. So I'd like for us to continue to say, let's, let's guide the present by where you wanna be in the future. Also, there's a lot of options you're gonna be presented with tonight. Roger Vannatt wrote in a book called The Whack on the Side of the Head. Truth is all around us. What matters is where we put our focus. So one of the very first agenda items we're gonna look at is the twenty forty vision. And what you've done, and let me just take a, a little bit of a prelude to that. Uh, I get to work with a ton of different cities. You know, I was in, uh, I was in St. George, Utah this week, working with the city of St. George. Uh, I'm working with another city in the next week and another city in Texas the next week, uh, in addition to all my private sector clients. It is extremely rare, first off, it is extremely rare for a city to do consistent visioning planning. You have a twenty twenty vision, you have a twenty thirty vision, you're now in the twenty forty vision. It's, it's rare that cities do that every ten years as a god. It's even rarer that cities actually use those. Because what often happens is, you know, they, they, they create the vision, the vision spurs, uh, a bond proposal. The bond proposal passes, everybody goes back, and then every year it's sort of starting over again for, for cities. The fact that you actually use your twenty forty vision and you like to use the twenty thirty and the twenty twenty, uh, I want you to understand how rare that is. Because that, that is very, very special. The last perspective that I wanna share with you is, uh, anyone here Ted Lasso watchers? All right, so, um, I'm curious, Kevin, what's your very favorite Ted Lasso scene? Do you have one?
Oh, it's the belief scene.
The belief scene?
Absolutely. Well, how he rallies the entire troop and they, you know, they have all the doubt and, but he constantly has that message of belief and they, both they tap it. Absolutely. Can say.
Yeah? Anyone else have a favorite one here? Interestingly enough, my favorite one is the dark scene.
Okay, the dark scene is good.
Yeah. So in case you don't know, Ted Lasso, our hero, he's an American football coach of a second tier school. He was recruited to go to England to coach a quote unquote real football team. And, uh, although he knows nothing about soccer or football as the rest of the world calls it. Um, he goes, and in, in this one scene, uh, the team is owned by a lady named Rebecca, who is the divorced wife of a guy named Rupert. Rupert is our villain. Rebecca is one of the heroes. Rebecca wins the team, uh, gets the team in the divorce settlement. And so now all that is set up. Rupert, the villain, if you will, is trying to usurp his power. And he shows up in a pub to play darts. And he challenges Ted Lasso, our coach, to a dart game. And, yeah, and as part of that, you know, Rupert brings out his custom darts. And everybody's really upset because they think Ted can't play. And then Ted says this, as he's proceeding to throw a bullseye the first time with the darts. He said, you know, all my life, people have underestimated. And for, for the years, I couldn't understand why. And then one day, I was driving my son to school and I saw this quote painted on the wall. And he said, it was a quote by Walt Whitman. And the quote said, be curious, not judgmental. And he said, because I've decided the problem is with them, not with me. Because if they were curious, and he goes on to say, because Rupert, if you were curious, you would ask me, Ted, you ever played darts before or whatever? Well, taking that quote to heart, I actually researched that quote. There's no evidence Walt Whitman ever said that. And I actually think it's cooler that he didn't. Because one of our challenges is to be curious as we go through the night. Uh, be curious with each other. I mean, one of the good news is about all of you being together is that you're together all the time. You sort of know how each other thinks. Uh, the bad news is you're together all the time and you sort of know how each other thinks. Some of you know already what Kevin's gonna say in your mind. Or you know what Beezy's gonna say, or John, or Mark, or, you know, Jim, they're still learning you, but they're figuring it out for sure, right? So I, I encourage us all to be curious. The other thing I'll share with you is this quote from Dwight Eisenhower. Plans, plans are worthless, but planning is everything. You do a good job here of staying on target with your plan. But we also know that plans can change pretty quick. Back in twenty nineteen, uh, when I was in the fall of twenty nineteen doing strategy sessions all over with all kinds of organizations, not a single one of them said global pandemic on our threat list. Would have been interesting had they done that.
Poor funding.
It was, it was obviously poor planning, right, John? So, um, the, the value is setting the direction to understand north, you know, that's north. I think, yeah, that's north. And that's where we're headed. Uh, I was able to speak with almost all of you. Uh, John and I missed each other, Mark and I missed each other. I, that's the back and forth and we never really connected. But, you know, I did talk to all of you and, and I just wanna let you know, uh, I have, I've shared with Mike some of the highlights of what we talked about. The highlights is this. Everyone believes everybody here wants to leave this place better than, than when you found it. Which I think is admirable, um, for each other and certainly good for the city. You also told us that there are some projects on your radar. Um, for example, you have a fire station, you have a performance arts practice facility, you have some overall infrastructure opportunities. Your, your infrastructure is getting a little older now. It's what, forty years old, Mike? Thereabout. So, you know, there's gonna be some infrastructure challenges. You talked about Royal Lane. You also talked about some policy and process on your radar. Some of those we will get to tonight and tomorrow. Others we will not get to tonight or tomorrow, but you will see them again in work sessions as we go through, uh, as we go through. So for example, there's some code enforcement issues out there. Um, there are some ordinances that are out there. Jim, you and I talked about one of those ordinances. That probably might not come up tonight, but we will make sure that one gets up. Um, pretty much all of you talk, mentioned somewhere something about Old Town or about senior living. Uh, those will come up a little bit tonight and then probably more as you move forward. So I did want you to know that they're heard and that we talked about them all. Some of them will incorporate, incorporate in tonight and tomorrow, especially as we get to budget planning and debt modeling and those types of things and how we move forward financially. So that's the update, uh, of everything to kick us off. Any questions? All right, this hopefully is a relatively easy. Tracy, come on up and take us through it.
Perfect evening. Thank you, Randy. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, I am here to walk through the results of the prioritization exercise that you all, um, completed the last couple of weeks. So here are the things we're gonna talk about. We're gonna talk about why this whole process is important at all. We'll talk about the, the process that you actually use to, uh, rate and prioritize each of the pillars and goals in the plan. We'll talk about how all of those things shook out as we go highest to lowest. Um, thought it was interesting that, that this year our prioritized goals did align with your highest prioritized pillars. So there's some nice, nice alignment there. And then at the end, I will be seeking some council direction because this year we had lots of ties. And so we actually have, um, if we want to include, which we have in the past, um, at least one work goal for each pillar, uh, we will have more than ten items, which is totally fine, but that's one of the things that we would be seeking direction from council on tonight. Let's talk about why this is important. Um, this literally sets the equation for, um, our process and planning for the upcoming year as it relates to the budget development process, uh, both for just fiscal year twenty five as well as helping us then forecast things that are important to the council as we look out for our future forecast. Um, each year, we kind of build on the year before us, before it. And so, um, as we've gone through this prioritization process since the vision twenty forty plan, um, was adopted, uh, we haven't had wild swings of, uh, you know, whiplash. It's been a fairly consistent, uh, direction that the council has been moving forward. And each year we take those top ten or twelve or whatever, however many of those priorities. And we then at the staff level, um, go through a number of iterations at the staff retreat to then say, okay, how do we move the ball forward for these priorities that council has articulated for us? We bring those back to you, um, as part of the budget, um, approval and development process. And then that work plan for next year is approved in September. So just a refresher on the process. So this is what we asked you to do in terms of the categories on how, uh, just general categories. So it wasn't one, two, three, four, five. I'd like you to rate it most important to highest, least important. Uh, really, it's around, uh, resources and where would council like to see those resources pushed and emphasized, knowing that there's a finite capacity for everything. Uh, so we asked, there's, uh, if you rated it a one, that means it's gonna fall back in, um, priority. It does not mean that that goes off of the radar and we do not work on that project. It just means that that is, it's just lower on our prioritization list. If you rated something a four, so that just means whatever we did this year, that is the level of effort, budget, um, resources that we will see moving forward for that initiative. And then for anything rated seven, that would be something that says, that's very important to me. I'd like to see more, um, time, energy, resources, capacity dedicated toward moving the ball forward on that particular item. You did prioritize both the goals and the pillars. Uh, as we learned a couple of years ago, that is important because if there is a little bit of discrepancy on how many goals do we want to include, prioritizing the pillars then helps you determine which of those extra goals you want to include to help support the most important pillars. And as a practice, um, we have, this is a carryover from twenty thirty. So this is one of those things where we like to make consistent progress on the entire plan each year. And so we have included at least one goal, the highest rated goal from every pillar gets included in the top ten. And then if there's the other, all of the other highest rated beyond that gets slotted in as the, as the rating dictates. Okay, so let's look at where the pillars, um, fell in terms of priorities for this year. Um, I mentioned we had lots of ties. And so you'll see pillar five and pillar four on business, um, business and innovation notes, as well as the four future oriented approach to residential housing. Um, those were the top two, um, highest rated priorities. Then we've got a tie, uh, for number two, we have three. So with the smart city, community oasis and our transportation networks all came in second. Then we've got pillar two, fostering an inclusive community fabric and pillar one, perpetuating a learning environment. I do think it's, there's not much, there's not much gap between one and seven as we work our way through those pillars. So that's the order in which, um, y'all, y'all's kind of average ranking shook out as it relates to the pillars. There's not much variation from last year, so you may have had one or two flip. Um, but there, as I mentioned, generally speaking, there has not been wild swings, uh, one way or another as we move from year to year. Okay. So these are the top fourteen goals, which sounds a little awkward because nobody does the top fourteen of anything. But that's just a function of all of the ties that you see up on the board here. Um, and so we go everything from Old Town, uh, supporting the Old Town area and concept that was clearly far and away the highest rated individual goal on the entire sheet. Um, and that was, that is consistent with every year that we have done this exercise. Um, that has been consistently in the top one, two, or three. Then we have, we actually have one, two, three, all four goals from, um, our business and innovation pillar. All four of them made it into the top fourteen. Okay. Again, consistent with where we said that was in terms of how important each pillar was. We've got, uh, coming in, so we look at explore future trends, our over fifty-five, um, housing options, and then our smart city operating systems, all of those tied came in as your second rated priority. We've got a cluster there for your third highest priority, which is establishing programs for unique character of single family home in the community oasis nodes. Re, re-visioning what our commercial and warehouse district is going to look like version two point O into the future. And re-fitting and refurbishment of our older housing stock, all of those came in tied at number, as your third highest priority. We've got another tie over here for four. Uh, so again, this is another one of our, um, business goals on redevelopment along our commercial and retail corridors, and then developing a sense of neighborhood at an appropriate scale. Got a clump here at the bottom, so one, two, three, fourth. One, two, three, yes, tied for fourth. Um, around transportation systems, studies for considering what is the future optimal population going to look like in Caffell? What are the demographics of that going to be? And that is, that's under the, uh, future oriented approach to residential housing pillar. So that is in the context of then what would our community need if they are going to live here across all of the seasons of somebody's life? And then establish rebuilding standards for Caffell and transform aging infrastructure. All of those came in tied at number four. And then we've got our last two down here. So those are the, everything that we've talked about so far. Um, that's kind of your top, top twelve-ish. If we want to include at least one goal from every pillar, then we would go ahead and include, uh, promoting socialization and community cohesiveness, as well as establishing Caffell as a laboratory. So that would be your top fourteen if we would like to include something from every one of the seven pillars. You got any questions about any of those? So at this point, we would be seeking direction from the council on this scope of work as it relates to the goals. Um, again, once we have this list finalized, then staff, we take that and we go to retreat, we go talk to our teams. All right, teams, here's the, here's what the work plan is gonna look like for next year. Here's what we have on the work plan for this year. What then do we need to do to move the ball forward and continue making progress for next year?
So what is the difference between this one and the one that we did last year?
Again, there is literally only one, maybe two that are totally different. And then one or two where you're kind of shifting where each one of those goals fell within the prioritization list. Okay, so last year, um, sorry, you muffled up the wrong spreadsheet. Okay, so last year, if we look at pillar one, your goal for that, your highest rated goal under that pillar, that is one that changed from current, uh, from fiscal year twenty-three. Um, no, we need, I need to be talking about fiscal year twenty-four. I'm sorry, I'm off two fiscal years. There we go. Yes. Okay, so again, goal number one for this current work plan, uh, this is one of the ones that changed. So your top rated goal, uh, for fiscal year twenty-four was diversified learning and enrichment, uh, opportunities available in Caffell. You did change, uh, priorities for pillar number two. So for this current year, um, it is purposely, purposefully break barriers to inclusion. Whereas we've got promotion, promote socialization and community cohesiveness for this upcoming year. Um, I will say in previous years, um, those have flipped off over time. So the very first one we went through, socialization and community cohesiveness was the top rated right out of the gate because we were coming out of COVID and we were all about how do we then start rebuilding the fabric of interacting with our neighbors again. Um, and then we've kind of flip flopped as we kind of go through. So, um, for pillar three, if you look here, so pillar three for fiscal year twenty-five, that is unchanged from our current, current work plan. Pillar four and pillar five, as I mentioned, those are almost all repeats from last year. Um, we had, those are very highly rated, um, goals and pillars for our current, uh, work plan, and that has been unchanged. And then I do know that for our, um, transportation, that is one that, um, there's another highest rated. No, that's right. So that was, that remained unchanged from current year. And then backbone of, um, build the backbone of smart operating systems, that was also your highest rated and pillar seven. I will say the established rebuilding standards, uh, did not appear in your top ten for this current year, and it is new for fiscal year twenty-five. So that has come up in priority from the current, uh, work plan.
So I'm looking.
Is that the information you're looking for, Mayor?
Yeah, uh, and very interesting, the, the ones that have changed literally. Um, they're so close together that one council person, if they had gone from a four to seven or seven to four, it would have changed that. They're that close together. So it's basically the same. I was just wanting to make sure that we weren't, even though the changes were small, that we weren't making, you know, like a shift in, in philosophy or something like that. And, um, it doesn't show that way at all. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Brianna?
So first of all, Tracy, thank you for putting this together. It's very helpful. And I think what I'm hearing you say is from looking at last year, looking at this year, there's a lot of similarities. And so I can only speak for myself, right, that the, the areas that I put a seven, and so a lot of these areas are, oh, sorry, thinking, are, um, obviously a top priority. Um, and continue to be a top priority. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, okay, so it was a top priority last year. It continues to be a top priority this year. How do we talk through what is it that we're doing or maybe is in the process of happening in those particular pillars? Because we're kind of, in some areas, we're saying the same thing, right?
Yes.
And so, and maybe some things just have a different condition. But yet we want you to know, I want you to know that those are still a top priority, right? Um, so that's my first question. The second one is, as I look at, I know we've, in the past have wanted, um, we, we've wanted something from each pillar, but at the same time, do we need to have something from each pillar? Because when I look at like established Caffell as a laboratory, laboratory of learning and I see it at a four, and it's clearly a four, I see that then as keep doing what you're doing, status quo. And can then we shift efforts to some of the other areas so that they can start to fall off our priority list, right? Because things are getting done. So those are my just thoughts overall.
Well, so, um, I'd like to address your first question around kind of visibility into how we make progress year over year based on the priorities that we see. Um, and so you noted that we, there's generally not a ton of variation year over year, which is really nice because some of the things that we're talking about here do not get checked and completed in a single fiscal year. So if we're talking about overhauling and finding out what is, what kind of options we have for fifty-five plus, the Ford Board has been very, um, intentional and careful and deliberate about how they've gone through the process to make recommendations to you all. Um, if we take our five-year forecast, so if we take a peek into the five-year forecast, Mindy has put money into the five-year forecast to push the ball forward for things like the, where the, I'm sorry, the refit and refurb, um, the village concept, all of those things have gone into the five-year forecast in as we move through with the Ford Board and at the direction of council, okay, that sounds like something we'd like to explore. Let's look at that more. And so from the process of as we move through, all of those things, um, as they continue to be very high on the priority list, those are things that as staff, we are incorporating into, um, both our upcoming year budget as well as the long range five-year forecast, knowing that some of those things are gonna require kind of consistent investment over time, whether that's in actual infrastructure. five-year forecast, knowing that some of those things are going to require kind of consistent investment over time, whether that's actual infrastructure or trying to stand up a program, that then we would like to have sustainable into the future. So one of the things that I, that I could offer you in terms of that visibility, generally, as a practice, we've only really come to council on updates on the work plan at the end of the year. And we provide you the giant packet of information that has a memo closing out every single item in there and tells you what happened. We could, I could do a better job of being in front of the council intermittently, maybe at a six-month interval to say, okay, here's where we are right now. Here are the things that we've accomplished. Here's what we did for these items to give you all a little bit of visibility into kind of how the, how we're working our way through those priorities.
Thank you. And I, and I see that as helpful as far as the six months, just to kind of circle back on that. Because then some of my sevens may be a four, right? Or vice versa, depending on how much work is going into those. And then to finish up my gun on the, on the last part of it is, I think that's the question really for council is, do we need to have, for example, at least the last one or the last two? Because those were the top rated ones in one and two? Or is it something that we could say, the message we got from council, the direction we're getting from council with, with those averages is keep doing what you're doing. Doesn't mean don't let it go, right? It's not a one. Keep doing what you're doing, but let's focus on closing out and moving forward some of the other top priorities. And I don't know where that is.
I think the, the thing that I look at here, you know, I don't think about this on a weekly basis, but when I look down that list, there's not a single item up there that we haven't discussed during a work session or a city council meeting. I, I mean, we went out to see the, the bill, or the senior housing, and it has invited the council up. That's part of the explore options for 55 plus. I mean, that's a, that is a direct action for that item. Now, have we made our decision out of mind I want it yet? No, but you know, we're actively working. Explore future trends. Well, we brought the, the retail coach in. I mean, you know, you can just go down and support Old Town. Well, we're going to have further discussions on that shortly. So, you know, it makes me feel good to, to be able to actually think about individual items that we have discussed and had come before us. You know, Ramesh talked about the smart operating system. So, you know, it, it makes me feel really, really good to look at a list like this and, and be able to put a tangible item to it. Kevin?
Thanks, Mayor. I, you know, I, I look at the, you know, with the rating system, with the, the seven, four, and the one. I don't know if this maybe is something that we're to think about, but maybe the closer it is to a seven, maybe the frequency we talk about something might be required, or the intensity of the, you know, whether that's financial, you know, means that we're throwing at it, or the, you know, the, the staff horsepower and stuff. I think about intensity and frequency. If that needs to be increased based on the higher amount on that. So just something for this body to consider is that it, we have, I, I think I've constantly seen support for Old Town as that top the list. So is, I know the last time we talked about Old Town, I believe was over the summer. If I'm, if I'm, should we be meeting about more, uh, Old Town and more often? And just as an example of that, and what does that look like? So asking some questions to hopefully, you know, give us maybe some thought about what that looks like.
And grandiose. If I could offer to your point, support Old Town, I'm trying to think of a time when that wasn't on your list. And it's been a while. So that is one that I know that, and we had a special meeting. We brought everybody in from across the community. We've done a number of things around that. Council, I'm curious, for staff, is the issue they're not giving you what you need? So there's three options that could happen here. One is they're not giving you the information you need to make a decision. Second option could be, we just, you know, we're getting information. We just haven't found the answer yet. We haven't, you know, found the one. We go, yes, we've all agreed that one. Or is the issue, you all just don't want to make a decision on it yet? By the way, that would be okay. If you all said as a council, we're not ready to make a decision. It's still important, but we're just not ready to make a decision yet. I mean, I think, you know, there would be some guidance that you could give them in the way of feedback on what you need to move that forward. The same with senior over 55 lip, you know, that one's been on your list for, I don't know, how many years?
Every year.
Every year since 2020? Okay, so, you know, we're, we're seeing a pattern. And, and I, by the way, Brianna, I, I know your frustration. So what would help you all move that forward? Go ahead, Kevin.
I, I know a personal thought on Old Town specifically is, I'm not sure as a council, we, you know, we, we, the phrase support the Old Town area and concept is up there. I think we all supported. But I think we all might have different visions of what Old Town might be, or we may be looking at previous council's vision. Uh, what it might be, understanding that, you know, environment has changed, uh, you know, uh, our populace has changed, you know, tolerances to different types of activities and stuff may have changed. So I look at that as an opportunity for council to have deeper discussions about what is our vision? You know, we have these, you know, a vision 2040 plan for the entire city. Since Old Town is such a special place that we're trying to make it so unique, maybe we need specific visioning for what Old Town looks like. And I know we've had a couple of opportunities for citizens to weigh in and stuff like that, but I think if we really want some traction on this area, we need to get deeper into the details about what specifically does that look like and what do we need to accomplish? Like, if the vision is breweries and wineries and a great place for families and, and people to come and visit, well, there's some, there's some work that, that has to be done by our community to enable that to happen. It's, it's actually outside our purview as a council. So we need to make sure that our vision is aligned with what the citizens want, and then we all move together. But I think that's, that's going to take strategic visioning to make that happen.
You know, I think we've been provided with all the information that we need from staff and I, I think the right opportunity has not presented itself. And I'm not sure that it will because of what Old Town is and, you know, the, the state it is in in terms of the amount of residential development. And I don't know if I'm ready to want to try and incentivize development downtown. You know, through some type of agreements with, you know, potential retailers or restaurateurs coming in. Because, just because someone has a vision for, you know, an, an Old Town that's, even say like Grapevine, that doesn't mean it's going to happen or it will ever be the right place just because of its, its location. So I, you know, as much as I support, and I, I gave it a, a seven, I, I just don't know that we'll ever be able to get there. Unless we're willing to, you know, put our money where our mouth is.
Yeah, I, I think Mark kind of hits where I am. I, and we've been inundated with information, staff's given us a lot of, of course, it's certainly not lack of information, retail coach, I mean, everybody who's information. Part of the, I think my biggest struggle is, I'm not sure from the standpoint of, you know, municipal governance, what the scope or the scale of what, what we would offer would be. I mean, we could have a contest and say, anyone that's going to start a beer pub is going to get these incentives and publicize it. But, you know, until the market kind of brings someone that's willing to take that chance. I mean, Let It Shine is famously successful boutique. People are coming in from all over North Texas to shop there. George seems to be doing very well. You know, it doesn't seem to be a location that can't sustain a particular business. It just doesn't seem to be the kind of location that most of the metrics that potential businesses look at are going to be met. So you have to have kind of that unicorn come along. And then I think on top of that, it, it's become such a residential community in relation to its overall footprint, that, I mean, other than the pad site next to Twisted Route, and other than taking up a big part of the lawn that we're using for public events, everything that the pulling all should really want, where would we put anything anyways? Uh, we had all those pad sites and all the development sites, and they filled it with financial advisors. Well, then that's what the market wants. And they're able to have people down there and have appointments and meet their clients and, you know, I'm not really sure, I agree with Mark, I'm not really sure how much we really can do as a government. And I would start by getting all the people that operate a business down there in a room and ask them, what do y'all need so we can support the people that are here? That we're not providing you if there is anything. And then what do y'all think it would take to attract people? But beyond that, I don't, I don't really know what else we can do.
If, if I can offer sort of a process observation, we could spend till tomorrow morning nonstop and, and figure out, figure out Old Town. Because they're all great ideas. And you can make a case for all of them. So from a process standpoint, I guess more than anything else, to provide staff guidance, I wanted to know of some of these that have appeared year after year, is it a matter of lack of information? We haven't had the right focus, or they deserve special focus, or we're just not ready to make a decision? What I'm hearing from at least two or three of you is we're not ready to make a decision because we don't know what the vision, we don't know what we're going to do. So it really is a more focused, what you'd be looking for, Brianna, I'm bringing this back to your question, how do we move some of these things forward? It's going to be on some of these that appeared year after year, we need to have a reset, agreed upon targets. Now, here's a question for you process-wise as a council. One of the wonderful things about Capella is that you involve people in establishing a vision. You had a whole group that did that. And you as a, as a council go and look at, these are the priorities around that based on what we know right now. You can continue to operate that way, or you can say, we want to tackle this. By the way, I don't want to recommend that one to you, but I feel obligated to at least acknowledge it for you. Would it help to move it forward with specific plans that involve the community? And moving some of these off your list? Whether it's, and by the way, it could be, you know, multiple groups, right? It could be the groups that's there, it could be people around there. I mean, there's a lot of different ways of approaching that. But is it safe to say that you would like to see a community involvement in moving that forward?
So I, I thought that currently we're finding a number of things, the staff, trying to, you know, come up with ideas to draw more, I guess, traction for the, whether it be residents or the outsiders, the outside visitors to come by there. Because we know that, like you said, some of the businesses, you know, they're doing well, but that's only very half, you know, one, two, three. But the rest of them, I, I thought we talked about, if we are able to bring in, drawing more people there, that the business probably will likely to maybe even think about investing. And, and that's what I thought we were actually trying all these different things, whether it be the food truck or other things. That's what I thought we were doing. But was I missing something?
No, no, you are correct. So when we talk about specific initiatives that are in support of this work plan item, yes, we have the, we tried in the fall, we started that food truck in conjunction with the events at the art center. We will have another series in the spring, and then we will report back to the council in the early summer, once we kind of get through all that to kind of see right here, is the experience that we had with this. For the, in the context of what we're talking about here, maybe I could offer understanding that from the, if we look at this from top all the way to the, to bottom, and even when we get to the bottom, those are still really highly rated items. These, all of the things that have been brainstormed and discussed right here in the last 10 minutes, those are all things when we, at the staff level, when we look at this list, we know that those are, we're going to provide, so this, this list tells us we need to, it's very important to the council and to our community. We're going to need to provide opportunities to work our way through, whether that means we have public engagement sessions, whether that means, so we talked during the ARPA presentation, and we've got an economic development kind of financial modeling assessment that we want to embark upon that will help provide kind of a foundational understanding of, right, here are the different scenarios from a development standpoint that could happen. Old Town being one of those focus areas, kind of to provide additional understanding for you all as decision makers. If this is what the community says we want, then this is, this is what the ROI will look like. This is what the investment level will take from our side. So those are the types of things, when we see those, that at the staff level, we are very cognizant of providing those opportunities that get those things in front of the council so that you all, whether it's decision-making here or at the board level, whether it's smart board or the board board, or parks board, to bring those items back to y'all. And that we make sure that we have that very high on our radar so that we move the ball forward. That's kind of, at least from a prioritization standpoint, understanding that we can kind of walk, walk our way through from a transparency standpoint a little better. I, I don't know if that's helpful in terms of decision-making, at least here for this list, understanding that all of the parts and pieces of what then supports each one of those goals, that's, that's kind of like the next step. So that's, that's, that's what we would be doing after, after this meeting when we get direction from y'all. And this is the universe of things that we think are the most important.
So, so I, I might be thinking wrong, but like 20 to 30, we, those are things that could definitely complete and then just move on from that. Right. But this list, actually 2040, I thought it was something that doesn't just accept for maybe one or two items, that it doesn't complete, you don't, you don't finish and move on. It's, it's continuously evolving. What do we do after this and so on? So I, I just thought it's not something that's going to be checked off and say, we're done with this.
Yeah, I mean, that
Exactly right.
That's correct. Now, over time, if we look at this 10 years from now, and let's say that Old Town has done exactly what this council wanted it to be, it may drop in priority because, okay, well, that, we've done what we wanted to do in Old Town. We've supported that and we've, we, we feel good about where we're at. So yes, over time, it's, it's not necessarily, we built a library. We're going to check that off the list and move on to something else. But I do think it'll end up kind of shuffling over time.
But it's not something that just right. So that's, that's probably, you know, thinking, but so like the old time, old town, I, I mean, when we talk about the old town, it, it is continuous, I guess, try and see what works. And then if that works, maybe we could act, that actually, what worked, actually could draw the businesses even more, you know? So that's what I was thinking, that that's why we have it up there. It's not something that, okay, we're going to do all in or we just stop. That's, that's not what I was thinking that we were heading towards.
So I guess one question would be, do you want to continue to have at least one goal from every pillar? That is, that's a council, that's, that's what you've done in the past.
Just to clarify, so like, let's take the bottom two. If, if we were to drop those off, what do, what does staff do with those pillars? Not do anything, or do you just continue on?
No, so they're rated a four. So whatever we saw today is kind of the, the level of effort that we would see tomorrow. If there is a, if we have a resource question, certainly the things at the top of this list are going to get more resources. If there's a question of, I've got this person and we need to, you know, prioritize. But yes, I mean, that's rated a four, so it's not like it was rated one.
So staff would continue on doing what it's doing.
The partnerships that we have now with the schools, we would continue those. It wouldn't be something that we would then spend a lot of time and effort growing. So it wouldn't be, you know.
Well, I guess I would, I guess I would propose, like in this case, those two, I think it's okay that they're not on the main list, if they're going to at least continue on. I mean, we, we clearly thought there were a lot of, a number of other things that were needed more focused or more important on there. So I'd be okay with not necessarily having that.
Yeah, because like the promote socialization and community cohesiveness, I would think that National Night Out, Kaleidoscope, those programs are I would think that National Night Out, um, Kaleidoscope, those programs are part of that and we're certainly not gonna get rid of those and. You know, probably will continue to let them grow organically, so. I, I think what we're hearing is it's probably, you know, when they are like at that level and. We're happy with the way the programs are going, just let them, let it go. So. I, I, I tend to agree with you that, you know, taking the bottom two off. Does make the prioritization list easier to manage, you only have 12 instead of 14. Think that's not a bad way to go, Kevin?
Just kind of a quick question, when you look at the, you know, this, the, the metrics here, you know, four is like, stay the course. You know, seven obviously is, let's put some resource in that. Looking at this, what's the breakpoint is like, anything that's, you know, I'm looking at four to 4.75, is like anything five and below, like let's stay the course? Or, you know, like, five and higher, is that, let's throw more resources, just, I think kind of understanding where that breakpoint is. Or is it, is it a scale, like, we're gonna throw more resources if it's a 6.625? Versus keeping it pretty chill if it's 4.375, like, does that make sense what I'm asking?
It, it does, um, now look, you only have like a point and a half between your top rated and the four. And so when we talk about breakpoint, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room there in order to kind of create that natural break. So, yes, at, at a practical level, anything that, at least, so. That we hear tonight from council that gets included on the top X, 10, 12, 14. Um, those are all of the things that from a resourcing standpoint are gonna take priority.
So, if, if you go with that, Mike?
Because what we know is happening in the five year forecast, because of what we know that the council will set aside. If y'all are wrestling with, if you're wrestling with this, let me just say. Build Capel's transportation system to connect its regional system, that's an everyday thing. Right? I mean, it's just an everyday thing. Undertake studies to consider optimal future city population, we have in the budget. Uh, coming up, uh, the comprehensive land use plan. In that plan, it will take a look at the demographics and the future population. And you'll also be able to talk about. What about housing and different housing and everything, right? Because like it's in the density issues and all those kind of things. On the green building, last year through Mark's leadership, what we heard was. We ought to use the standard uh, as the goal, not that we necessarily were gonna adopt. Ellie, you know, lead, right, in terms of, because of all the other issues associated with it. But we received direction from the council and as a whole, that as we go forward from our work at least. We are gonna at least look to lead and see where we can match up with it and be able to show you. Through ad alternates and those kind of things, what the difference, cost differential is, right? In terms of what we're looking at. The, the promote socialization, community cohesion, we already talked about that, and I can tell you about the last one. You know, we're doing, hopefully we're gonna be doing some pretty creative things with the school district and the college. Just out of the natural connections that we have. So, I, I don't know if that helps you, you're asking your question, I, but I want you to, to y'all's comment about how we look at it. We are constantly looking at the pillars to see where we have opportunities to leverage what we're already doing. Right? And so when we bring you different things, we're, we're, we're doing that. To your point about focus, um, we literally budgeted. Using Old Town as an example, we budgeted for the food trucks, you know, we, we're, we're budgeting for different things. Uh, we budgeted because of the direction you gave us through the work plan and the budget for the village concepts that'll be presented to y'all pretty soon. Um, so I could see, and I'm, I'm just using imagination here, explore new options for 55 plus. I can probably tell you next year our focus is gonna be implementing the village concept. And that'll probably be the extent of that goal, I mean, that, that, that objective for us, because that's gonna be a new program with new effort. We have, it's, there are only so many that we can model, so it's gonna be, right? So, I'm not trying to take away anything, I just want you to understand, to the question as I heard it. From about the, let's just call it 5.125. Down, uh, so the 4.75 down, maybe that's the way to say it. We, we're, we're doing that stuff. If, if that, if that helps you, now, we understand it's a priority, because we have the information here from the work plan that says. Hey, this is something for y'all to work, work on. And it helps give them direction, and we look at those pillars and what they would be doing. From a budgetary standpoint. There are just certain things though that are beyond us, you know, as far as that economic study, or. I'm just using that as an example, stop, that we would have to build into the budget that y'all would take a look at in July. But, does that help? In, in terms of, then, here's the thing. This is a 2040 plan, I remember Clay used to say this all the time, it is not a tomorrow plan. And to the point of that is, uh, this one is different than 2030. Uh, and it is just constant evolution and, you know, Randy and I had a, a really great conversation. Because of the way that we do this. We're gonna be able to talk to y'all about some, we have some creative things that we could do that nobody else is doing. And we'll probably talk about that tomorrow, Randy. But we have some creative things that we could offer, it's like, wow, and if it's successful, bang for us. If it's not, it didn't hurt us. Right? So that's a great place for you to be, so, I don't wanna belabor it, but I just wanted to hopefully. To answer y'all's question, if you're trying to think in terms of, well, there's a lot up there, where to be prioritized and everything like that. Hopefully that helps.
The other thing that I would expect that you would see when it comes to budget, Mike and Tracy helped me. Is when you start seeing budget items come, it come to you. You're probably not going to see. New budget items that you've never seen before on establishing Capel's laboratory. It will be, we're gonna continue, we're with a college, we're gonna continue with the school. If an opportunity presents itself that's low cost or no cost, you would take that. But nobody's gonna be outgoing saying, by the way, we need three new FTEs and a new van. And we're gonna have a, you know, Capel mascot that goes around, I mean. Right, so you're, you're not gonna see that, what you're gonna see is they're continuing to be aware of it and be focused. On the other hand, um, you might see when it comes to repurposing commercial centers. You might see something very specific come out on how do you do that? Uh, that maybe not even, it's not even there yet, so. Some of this, even though it's a priority, you'll see it, but it's just not probably gonna grow in focus. Jim?
So, I guess I have a question then, and Tracy probably be able to tell me, but. So what does it mean then that the top, of the top eight items, seven of them, seven of them are from two pillars? Right, so. What, what significance does that bear? And we've been talking about the bottom end of the scale and Mike makes a good point on that. But with respect to the top end, the top eight items, seven come from only two pillars. So clearly that's a high priority for the council as a whole. So what, how is that manifested in terms of where staff goes from here forward? I mean, y'all are already doing a lot of that stuff.
We are, and so when we talk about.
You, you go ahead, I'll, I'll pile.
So when we talk about what effort is already being um, applied to those two pillars specifically. Um, you know, we've got, there are a lot of resources in current year budget and future year budget in our five year forecast. So when we, so how does that manifest itself? At a, at a functional, purely functional level, um, the planning for that on how to fund initiatives. To get those programs that the board board's working on, um.
Smart board, they did give out their recommendation, the digital twin.
You know, we talked a lot about what, you know, we talked a lot about Old Town, that's all in the, in the context of economic development and what. What vision do we want for the community, particularly around this area? Um, and so we spent a lot of time um, and effort around trying to. Walk through the community conversation, because that's how something's gonna be decided in one meeting, it's a community conversation um, around. Where, where do we want to go? Um, yeah, well. My initial response to that, and Mike's got some initial comments, I'm doing this. That all manifests itself as you was looking in the, the budget, in our five year forecast, because that's where the bulk of. Just outside of, we need to repave streets and sidewalk and all that, a lot of, a lot of what we will see from a programmatic standpoint. Um, it's all in support of those, those initiatives.
Let's follow up on that real quick. But then, if we can't articulate as a council. What we wanna do on the top. Then what is staff supposed to do? In implementing what we can't even articulate?
So, that's where the work plan and your adoption of the work plan comes in. We laid out again, using the Old Town, it is a sequence of, uh, let's call it events or a sequence of conversations. Um, you, you know, in terms of, not to bury this here, but. It, it, that's the best way for me to describe it, i- it's the same way that Ford has gone through what they're doing, it's the same way that smart board you got through they're doing. We bring you the work plan and you say, okay, here's the things that we think help keep moving the ball forward. And, and y'all see those, and you can say, well, you know what, we like that or we don't, you know, if you remember some of that conversation or. Yeah, so we're good, keep moving in that direction, we budget accordingly, we know where our time's gonna be spent. And that's how we keep, keep it moving forward. So, take a 23, 24 work plan that's related to Old. This, we've already committed to you, later this summer, we're gonna come back to you. And we're gonna say, here's the different things we've tried. Just from our standpoint of trying to generate activity, from a governmental standpoint, yeah, if you might use it from that perspective, right? Um, on the old, uh, I'm sorry, on the, the village concept, in the 23, 24 plan. Y'all had already endorsed the village concept, we put it into the budget, you gave us a person to do that. And I guess is it Katie pending, or Katie's gonna be coming to you, we're ready to kick it off. Right, in, in this year. So, and that's why I'm saying to translate it in next year's plan. It may not be anything necessarily new, but it'll be implement the village concept, right? And so we'll be giving a report of that, and to the smart board, uh, they've done five pillars? Five, right? Yeah, so looking at all five of them leading up to the digital twin, while I don't know what the necessarily the cost is, but tomorrow we get to talk about that, that's what's actually kind of exciting. While they kind of said, well, it may be really expensive, but you've got some latitude. And you may tell us, that's something that we really wanna pursue under building the back door, backbone of the smart operating system. And we budget accordingly. So that's how we keep these things moving.
But there's a difference though, right? Because like on the Ford deal, it's a little bit more of a concrete. You know, we, we started the program, now we're gonna implement the program, whereas with Old Town, it's more like.
It's an evolution.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense to me.
And the, and the market, quite frankly, to all of us, is going to do this as we're going through that process.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the only time straight lines appear are in averages, uh, so. The, the, the other thing that I read from this is, is this, that as a council, if you ask, what are your biggest concerns? Or biggest areas of focus, what you're saying is. Business and innovation, e- economic, traditionally economic development, and what's the future of housing and residential? I hear, that, that's what I take away from this, is that you and, you and the council is saying, those are critical for us. Uh, yeah, keep doing everything else, but those are really critical. Am I reading that right? Just fun question. So that would be the other way of thinking about it, you've just said, those are the two areas that we really are, are focused on, yeah, we're, we're concerned about, so. So you haven't reached an agreement yet on, do you want to have 14 or 12?
Or less.
Or less?
Yeah. Cause I was gonna go back to what Kevin said and. And then Mike having given us the information that he gave us on everything that's on the 4.75 and. 4.375 and four. I mean, I would be in favor of, knowing that information, I'd be in favor of taking everything at 5.125 up. Yeah.
Everyone okay?
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you have been doing one. I know, we're not done. Okay, just a couple of comments I just wanna make, uh, I do agree on the business and housing. Here's a review on that, the reason we rate those so high is because that's what a city does. The city takes care of housing, city does economic stuff, so that's the main stuff, once we get into those other pillars, those are more of the. Quality of life, sort of more ancillary things, so that's. Why I think we focus on those others, that's what a city is supposed to do, that's what a city ought to do well. Um, another couple of just comments. I think on Old Town. Just like we did on the veterans from, or Veterans Plaza. I think there could be a future where we need to think bigger than the dollars that we spend down there. Or the geographic area that we have limited it to. And that's, we have received a ton of data on what we have given staff up to this point. And a lot of times staff does operate within whatever parameters we give them, like they should. We may need to think at some point about expanding that box from a geographic standpoint and from a. Money standpoint, if we want something different to be in Old Town, so that's sort of a. Futuristic comment, I mean, I, I, I'm afraid, I'm afraid we're gonna keep chewing on the wall if we don't change some of. Those limitations going forward. And then switching over to one other thing on housing, I know it's not always real popular, but there is one on here that's down, it's the fourth one. Under, I guess, pillar four, and it's the least rated one, undertake studies to consider. Optimal future city population, I just wanna go on record, I do think that is something that we. Are going to have to consider in the future, maybe in the near term even. Um, and, you know, it's a bad word sometimes, but density is something I think we're gonna have to consider, especially as we continue to rehab. And redevelop certain areas of town, uh, that has not been sort of what Capel has had historically, is much density. Uh, and understandably, but I do think that is something we're gonna have to consider and at least see how it fits in. To the future, because that's what a lot of the surrounding communities with the growth we're having. Um, I just think we need to be open and, open to it, it goes back to your comment about be curious, not judgy about things, so. I think we may need to talk about some of these things in the future, so, right, uh, related to Old Town and housing. So just comments, a couple of comments.
If you look across the country, there are a lot of interesting conversations happening across the country. About density and housing is even in what is traditionally single family neighborhoods. So, I think you're probably right. Any other comments on that? All right, you've been going for an hour and ten, nine minutes. Uh, would you like to take a break or would you like to take on? Code compliance regarding the central, uh, the rental program?
So, let's go ahead, no, I think item number five is gonna be relatively quick.
Okay.
So, if we wait till then, we're gonna have a real short session, so. I'd recommend we go ahead and break now.
I'm okay, how long do you want, 10 minutes, five minutes, you tell me, 10?
Five.
Five, all right, I'll give you seven, I'll give you seven, because a couple of it will take longer.
I'm not coming back. I'm not coming back.
Since we did recess, we can't really read the theme, but let's get started again.
Okay. Let's talk about code compliance. Did you need a bar?
I've got one, I'm sorry. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am here to talk about compliance again. Okay, here we go. Uh, so as you all know, Louis was recently in front of you to present kind of on our code compliance process. And through that, he mentioned the rental program. So tonight I'll dive a little deeper into information about our current rental program. But before I get started, I want to speak a little bit about why we have our rental program. Um, the main purpose of our rental program is to make sure that properties are being maintained for the well-being of the tenants that will reside in them. But it's also to protect the integrity of Capel's neighborhoods. So currently the city has four thousand three hundred fourteen registered rental properties in town. Rentals make up roughly twenty-nine percent of the total residences in Capel today. So you can see the breakdown on the screen. Um, for single family rentals, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about each of those, what we do with each of those. So for single family rentals, um, which you will also refer to as long-term rentals. And that's because those are rentals that are thirty-one days or more. Um, and inspection occurs each time it's, there's a tenant change. Um, that's again, to ensure that damage wasn't done by the previous renter and that the landlord is making the property for the next renter. Um, on average during school year, staff performs five to ten rental inspections per week on the single family rentals. During the summer months, whenever you see more turnover in the individuals coming and going in Capel. That number grows to twenty to thirty rental inspections per week. Um, his inspection itself does not typically take a long time. It's all the work leading up to the inspection in some situations that take a long time. And that's whenever we have a landlord that does not notify us that they have a tenant change or won't provide us access for a rental inspection. And then the work that happens after that takes so much time on those inspections. Um, for multifamily rentals, ten percent of the units at each apartment complex are inspected every year. So that's approximately two hundred and eighty-two multifamily units being inspected each year. And then every short-term rental is inspected annually. So I'm going to put this slide up there just so you can see. Um, it's, it shows the work that is done after an inspection has been done. Um, so staff goes in, does the inspection, takes a picture of the items that are in violation. And then they have to come back, upload those pictures and document every single thing so that they can get that to the rental, um, to the property owner. So you can see some of these, um, the top left corner, I just included, um, when they went into this one, there was just a toilet missing. So for example, that is the condition that we find some of these rental properties in. And then like I said, they document and they get those back. Um, and then, uh, sometimes staff, sometimes the items that are not life safety issues. Um, they go ahead and let a tenant move in, but they still go back and do an inspection to make sure the other items have been resolved or fixed for the tenant. Um, for single rent, single family rentals alone, Capel's seen an increase of four hundred nine single family rentals over the last five years. And the majority of the increase has occurred over the last two years, which leads us to believe that is a trend upward, that we're going to continue to see the rental properties increase each year. Um, we believe Capel's right for rental properties because it is a desirable community with great schools. Many of the owners of these properties realize what a great business venture it is to have a rental property in Capel. Home values are high, schools are great, and Capel's a great place to live. And so many young families can't afford to buy a home here, um, but they still want to live here. So, um, individuals buy these properties knowing that it is a great investment for them to have this business in town. And, and that is what it is for them. It's strictly a business. So, um, I'll give you an example. We have one property owner that owns fifty-six rental properties in town. And some of those are townhomes, but it is fifty-six properties. So, um, and we have several of individuals like that in town that own more than one property. So again, it's really a business venture for them.
So Mindy, do you know if any of these are institutional owners?
Uh, several of them are. Several of them are. So, um, the city faces several challenges when it comes to our rentals. Um, as I mentioned, as I just mentioned, the number of single families, uh, rental properties are continuing to increase every year. So it makes it hard for staff to keep up with the demand of the inspections that they must perform. Um, the housing stock in Capel is aging anyway. And so that sometimes make the, makes the conditions of the home decline. Especially if homeowners are not, or property owners are not maintaining their property. Um, our experience shows that this is most commonly found with landlords of rental properties that do not live here or nearby. And, and again, obviously don't take care of their properties. Um, we have numerous property owners that refuse to register their, register their rental property in the first place or to renew their registration each year. So staff has spent a tremendous amount of time trying to track down those individuals to get them to register their rental properties or renew their, their rental. Um, many rental properties refuse to have their properties inspected. And when they are inspected and issues are found, staff spends a tremendous amount of time working with them to get those properties into compliance. Um, so I'll now provide a quick overview of the rental inspection process. So, um, or reg, registration process. So staff is notified of a rental property in one of two ways. Either the owner contacts us on their own to register a rental property or utility billing notifies us that the water is being switched to someone other than the property owner. So that triggers that, that is most likely a rental. And then, um, we do assume that some people are just unaware when they're, if it's their first rental property, they're unaware that they have to register it as a rental property. So we send an email to the property owner as soon as we get notification, letting him know that, um, the property must be registered as a rental property. And then we send them the rental registration form and it really has two main sections. It's information about the property owner and then informo, information about the property management company if, if they're going to have one. Every rental owner gets an email, like I said. And, um, it also explains that there's a fee of fifty dollars to register their property and a fee of forty dollars to have it inspected. Um, explains that they will receive an invoice and a calendar with available times and dates to schedule their rental inspection. And then it also explains that the rental inspection needs to be performed prior to the first tenant moving in. Um, explains that the property owner will need to renew the rental inspection every year and schedule an inspection each time the tenant changes. Then also whenever it comes time to renew, we also send them another invoice and a reminder that they need to renew their, um, rental registration. So the, there are seven main areas staff is inspecting when they do a rental inspection. Um, you can see those up on the screen. So the first two areas involve the exterior of the property. And those are areas that are being inspected, just like we do on any property in town. Um, and then for all of the interior inspections, the main thing staff is checking for is to make sure that the floors, walls and ceilings are in good repair. That all of the plumbing is in good repair with no leaks. All electrical outlets are working properly so that they aren't a fire hazard. And that all windows and doors work correctly so the tenants have the ability to leave the home if there's a fire or any other emergency. So the list I provided just now covers kind of the typical things that we're looking for when we do a rental inspections. But once they are inside the home, they will sometimes see other issues that they then have to bring up. So, um, in this particular situation, um, when staff went in there, they realized that they had changed one room into two rooms. And so as a result, this room did not have any windows, which is already a life safety issue. And then because they had moved walls around, um, their wiring was not correct. And so instead of having it actually, an electrician come in and wire it, they just, if you can see, they just pulled the wiring from the old fixture in order to light the next fixture. So those are the kind of things that staff then sometimes sees that they're not necessarily going in to look for, but they find it once they get in there. And so, um, this, when staff was working with this individual, um, they fought them the entire way through this. And, um, I believe actually made some phone calls to some council members as well. So, um, this, this was a, a very long, arduous process on this particular situation that were life safety issues. So again, really the main purpose of our rental program is, like I said, to make sure that properties are being maintained for the well-being of the tenant, but also to protect the integrity of Capel's neighborhoods. Um, due to the increase in rental units in Capel, we have had to reallocate the duties of our code compliance officers. And we've dedicated one person strictly to handle all the rental properties, which means then we really only have two individuals covering everything else in Capel today. Um, as our community ages, ages, we're seeing code issues that we've not had in the past, such as blighted properties and substandard structures that are being ordered to be demolished. Um, all of these new to Capel issues are taking more staff than a typical code case that we've seen in the past, such as high grass and weeds. Um, and again, the, I, Louis explained kind of the typical code process for you before. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions about that. But, um, really we're, we're maintaining the emphasis on reaching compliance rather than citations. But I will say that when it's someone that we have dealt with, it's a repeat offender. We do cut out our timeline of how much time we give them to come into compliance. Um, so we are trying to speed that up so that we can gain compliance sooner. And so with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have about this.
John?
Thank you. You mentioned that unless the owner notifies or the utility bill changes, then we wouldn't know if those two doesn't happen.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
We, we have a third party vendor that's looking for the short-term rentals, but there isn't the same kind of, um, sites for the long-term rentals. So they're not looking for those.
Okay. And then when, when you, um, find some, I guess discrepancies or need to be repaired before they act. Or even the renewal, if you find some, then we just issue them a notice and then just, uh, how, how far do they go?
Yeah, it's the same process where, I mean, we are just constantly trying to keep in front of them in order to get the, for them to re-register their property. Or if they haven't, um, if they won't allow us access to the property, staff will not stop until they gain access. Because it really is for the life safety of the tenant living there, um, that we need to get in and make sure that everything is safe for somebody to be in there. So it's sometimes it takes a long time for us to finally get it, but they will stick with it until they finally gain access.
And then if we, if they don't correct, was, what needs to be corrected? Is there, do we charge for like a reinspection fee or?
We, um, I'm, 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 I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't think we charge a late fee, but if, oh, I'm sorry, for a reinspection if they go. Yes, sir, no, we don't charge for, to go back out for a reinspection.
Is that typical? Cause I, I thought a lot of cities, they actually do charge if you don't, um, you know, come to, if you don't fix it by the next time, then if you are having to come back second or third time.
So for our, um, for our building, like our building inspection process, we do charge a reinspection fee. Um, but we don't today for code, but I mean, we certainly can. That's something we can certainly bring back as an option for y'all to consider.
Saying that, you know.
Well, I had a couple of questions on the fees. I thought we charged a hundred dollars for, uh, rental inspection. Where did I come up with that number? I, I dreamed it up. So ninety dollars to, to, to register and inspect is, is phenomenally low.
And now again, they pay that inspection fee every time a tenant changes. So if they have more than one tenant in a year, they're getting charged the forty dollars multiple times.
That's still phenomenally low compared to other cities. I mean, I've gotten, um, some cities will charge twelve to fifteen hundred dollars to register rentals.
We raised our, uh, our, um, rental fees not too long ago. Um, and, and that was a little bit of a struggle. Um, so, but that's something we can certainly bring back. We, we received, uh, the feedback from the property owners that have rental properties. Um, we're very upset with the increase of fees.
One of the things I heard at the, at the conference of mayors last week was the, um, growing trend for institutional buyers to buy, buy houses and rent them out. Um, some cities are really struggling with it because the, when we talk about institutional buyers, we're not talking about, you know, fifty-five houses. We're talking about hundreds of them. And they, they turned the, an entire area into basically a rental city. And I'm, I, I don't think that that's the direction that we want to go.
Let me offer, uh, just west of us in North Ritzland Hills. Uh, they, a couple of years back had a developer come and say, we'd like to put a development, sort of townhome, single, not too unlike what you have over here. And they approved it because they thought it was a great development, only to find out that the entire place was being built for rental, for rentals. Uh, now here's the pros and cons. Obviously several people were like, wow, we didn't know that. And so they went back and said, tell us about it. And the institutional investor said, actually it's better from their perspective that there's an institutional investor as opposed to individuals. He said, because wherever we are, we have, uh, we have invested interest in keeping this entire area nice because we own all of it. So, um, we have a vested interest. By the way, the other side, of course they would say that because that's what they do. So there, uh, institutional investors are in general in cities everywhere, the largest growing. Uh, they're basically private equity funds. And then there are PE funds being developed all the time for people to say, everything from single family homes, the townhomes, the multifamily. There's, uh, there, there's a growing private equity market in that regard, everywhere.
I, I'm just going to ask the council, is this something that concerns you? Do we want Mindy to go back, take a look, come back with some suggestions? I'm very concerned about the growing number of rentals that we've already seen. I mean, myself. John?
I just want to follow up on the question. Um, how many reinspections have we had because we did not complete things that require things on time? Cause I'm trying to see how much of time does the staff has, you know, being, I guess, you being used to just, to go back just because they did not do it in time.
I, I don't have that number right now. Um, I would believe that probably very few get a perfect score on the first inspection.
Because many cities, if they have a reinspection fee, uh, by God, they, they won't get that done because they don't want to pay that fee, right? It's not to punish them, but just so that they can get it done. So you, you don't really waste the time of the staff having to come back again and again. Cause you know, there's, there's no consequence of not getting it done in time. Other than not being able to rent, I guess, initially, right?
If, if it's life safety, yes, we will let the tenant move in. But we, we can certainly take a look at our surrounding cities and do kind of a study of what the fees are, what they charge, what those fees are, and bring that back to you. That's.
And again, it's not about to, to make it efficient rather than having to go back over and over. John?
Uh, to answer your question, I probably even compared a little bit, the increase in renewals. Uh, so I'd be curious to at least know what other communities are doing and sort of what it looks like from other places. I'm probably more concerned about uh, having the resources in your staff to keep up with this shift in the market. Um, and so I don't know if that means we should anticipate you'll need more individuals in the future to, for code compliance to focus on rentals or what. Uh, cause I, I guess I do feel like we need to make sure staff has the resources to keep up with it. Cause even if you can't control the number of rentals, you can at least control the compliance with, with ordinances. Um, and not, and not let them get over, overwhelmed or burned out.
Kevin?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I, I do agree with, uh, with Don on that. I do want to make sure that your department, uh, has the manpower necessary, uh, to make sure that we keep Capel a nice place. Um, I would definitely be in favor of a kind of a multi-brand approach, looking at other, other cities. Um, what are they charging? You know, are they, are, I don't know, the, the institutional investing thing is, is very concerning. I don't know what that particularly looks like if that's, you know, I think about Capel. I, I just have a personal story about how my family moved here and how it was a big, uh, it's a big win for our family to be able to, to get a house here and, and, and grow in this community. And I want other people to be able to have that, but obviously, you know, you can't like be choosers on, you know, like, you know, selecting winners on who gets houses and stuff like that. We can't keep, you know, corporations out like that that are buying housing stock. But, you know, I don't know what the legalities are of, of looking at like, you know, is there, you know, some sort of like tiered approach to, you know, these institutional investors versus? You know, I don't know what the legalities are of looking at like, you know, is there, you know, some sort of like tiered approach to, you know, these institutional investors versus. You know, an individual owner or something like that, it's looking, I'm I'm not sure, I I hate to speculate on on, you know, what that looks like, but. Uh, maybe there's something there, but a multi-tier approach to looking at staff, looking at how resources are allocated. And looking at what other cities are doing, especially with the rental fees, I think, John, um, that I wanna make sure that um, there's team. To, you know, if it's just a, you know, like, there's no, I don't know, um. Consequence to not having your your stuff together when it comes to inspection time, you know, obviously, uh, life safety is incredibly important. So I wanna make sure that we're not wasting people's time, missing staff time as well.
So when you put your little comparison, make sure you include the the number of rentals, their population, uh, the number of staff that they have. Uh, kinda give us an idea of where everybody else is standing on that as well.
I I have a question, first off, Kevin, um, one of the, one of the reasons why sellers sell to institutional investors. Is they typically pay cash.
True.
Um, and they, I mean, I'm surprised none of you have received a call yet.
Right, it calls well.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, and. And and so and and so what they're bringing is cash, um, which makes it very easy. Here's a question though, that comes back to the demographic issue that you've sort of addressed before. Is that if you look at the age of which buyers are buying homes. It in the last several years, it's gone up. Mostly because younger families can't afford to buy you. So here's a little bit of a potential catch twenty two. We we know that Capel School District is a plus for this community, one of the reasons people want to move in. Um, and so if if there is um a barrier to finding housing. Then it makes it harder for younger families, it potentially make it harder for younger families to move in. And quite frankly, if people continue, the the trend continues to buy houses later. It could eventually affect the marketplace too. So I mean, it it's not an easy, you know, automatic decision that say rental is bad, if you look at it in general. Do any of you have children who, uh, at sixteen were not interested in getting their driver's license? Yeah, why not, Brianna?
And yeah, friends, it would take him wherever he needed to go.
Right, and so, you know, there 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 are some trends out there, uh, for most of us, when we got sixteen, the car was freedom. Ninety four, buying the first home meant freedom. There's a growing population that says buying home is not freedom, it's entrapping. So, I mean, there are some demographic shifts that are taking place that are also driving some of the rental. Some of the, some of the conversations around rentals across the country.
Um, can you go back to the slide? The count with the apartments. So out of the two thousand eight hundred and fifteen, those are the three main apartments, one in the Rock Road. One in North Copper Road and one in MacArthur, right?
We have more than three apartment units, apartment complex units, but yes, that includes those.
What are the ones?
Um, we've got, um, okay, so we've got River Chase, um, St. Marin.
There's several down here.
Yeah, there's the Oaks at the River Chase and. Right, they're all around the golf course. Yeah, and then we've got the what used to be called the Mansions, I don't know if the name is now, so.
Yeah.
I think we have seven apartment complex units in town.
So you mentioned ten percent of the, that you inspect randomly or by request?
Uh, we are, the apartment complex knows that we are doing ten percent inspections, so we typically do it randomly. Um, but then we try not to do the same unit the next year, right, to make sure that all of them are getting inspected over a period of time.
Okay, so and there's also an application fee involved, even though they are not requesting you know inspected, but cities asking.
No, I'm sorry, the rental registration is just for the, what I was talking about, the single family rentals.
No, not with apartments, you said ten percent of the apartments get inspected every year.
They're not applying, they're not doing a registration form, but they are inspected, yes, sir.
Okay, so that doesn't involve a fee?
Yes, they do pay a fee every year also, they're just not registering the in each individual.
Okay.
If if that's what I understood your question.
Yeah, so apartment people are not registering, only residential, single family owners are doing the registration.
Correct.
More people will pay a fee.
Yeah, the apartment complex will pay a fee, so not the individual tenant in the apartment complex, the apartment complex pays a fee every year, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure, thank you.
I was just gonna say, code compliance related, further discussion down the road. And multi-generational housing is also an issue. Um, that's gaining more traction in our community, and it brings up some really interesting. Challenges for the way you view what a single family home is. Uh, in terms of uh, the mother-in-law kitchens or the father-in-law kitchens and the those kind of things. Not for tonight, it's all related into the kinds of things that community development. Didn't have to deal with before, but it's having to deal with now. And I don't know if y'all remember or not, but Tracy, she pulled up, I guess that was twenty three, twenty four, right? The first one that she pulled up, with the uh work plan?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, uh, ninety eight percent of all those uh that were on that work plan were community development. So a lot of the economic development that you talked about tonight, a lot about the housing, that all falls, so when you ask the question about capacity. That department is a real catchall for a lot of the uh, and emphasis of the council.
Yeah, six, six stat numbers.
Yeah, from code compliance to economic development.
And by the way, as you move into multi-generational housing, um, Mike, when you do that, are you also considering? Second homes built?
Yeah, I mean, what they're having now, they're already dealing with uh new home construction that has. Mother-in-law, father-in-law suites for both sides of the family in the house.
But I don't, how about, how about secondary structure?
Uh, don't know if that's kind of, yeah.
Don't have those yet, but we are talking about that at court. Is is that something that we should be looking at to accommodate multi-generational housing going forward?
That's, that becomes a big issue, one of the issues, it's not just the the code. There's also the, you know, sewer lines, the water lines, the.
What's the system, how it's built?
Yeah, you you get the whole thing built in there, also you have access to U S. Um, through the back and and how you do that through the.
Uh, just quickly, I I apologize if I should know this, but your overall department, community development, what all? Falls under that, ECO DVO?
Mm-hmm, we have economic development, we have code compliance, building inspections, planning and zoning, environmental help, and. Now what we're calling neighborhood engagement, the programs like Rock and Roll, Neighbor Helping Movers, so.
And are there separate teams for each of those different categories, or they sort of overlap?
We all kind of do a little bit of everything, um, but predominantly there are two to three staff people for each division covering those, all of those departments.
Okay, alright.
And the village concept will fall under.
And that'll be an English staff, right?
Yes, that's your all group staff member.
Thanks.
I guess my only thought is that I think our extremely low fees are probably encouraging for the rentals. And I I certainly wouldn't do that, um, I also think if we're in a situation where we have greater need for capacity, but. But we're not able to afford it, so fees are still low, so I think, you know, certainly the need for some additional capacity is there, but I think we should. Uh, particularly the the landlords that don't live here. I don't think our taxidermist should have to pay for the additional capacity, I think the people that are applying for the rental should have to pay for it through the higher rental fees. So my question really was, so when you're struggling, as you so delicately put it, with one of these folks. What does that mean? What what's your, what's your enforcement mechanism? What 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 do you have? What's the criteria you call?
It's, I mean, it's a very tough thing, so we eventually go to segregation, but once we go to citation, then it goes to the courts, court process. And it really is out of our hands then, um, and a lot of times then they could just go pay the citation fee, but it doesn't fix the situation. And so it's just a, it's a never-ending process.
So the court doesn't doesn't also enter into requiring the fix?
So that what would require that is us going to the Board of the J- or, it depends, there's different processes, so. If it's in a planned development, then the process for any kind of various changes comes through P N C and City Council. Um, if it is not, then it goes through B O A. If we get to the point of needing to talk about a substandard structure, we'll have to build in a standard commission, which is B O A serves in that capacity as well. So, um, that is, and and we have recently had two structures that went to Building and Standard Commission. Um, the process for determining a substandard structure and demolition. Just on average, if it really goes that route, it probably takes about five years for a structure before it's ever actually demolished. But the frustration it causes in the neighborhood, um, in the meantime, and our staff is dealing with that. And and they don't understand that there's a process and they're having to deal with that phone call, sometimes on a daily basis. And so it's, um, we're not really popular in town.
Well, I I understand that there's gonna be a higher power to clear if you're looking to go on this property and demolish the partially constructed home. Uh, invest a lot for him, um, and there is gonna be, that's a much more involved process than trying to get someone to fix a. The lighting fixture with the, you know, legal wiring, but I would be very interested in, you know, Bob Hager made a point the other day. About how, you know, if you don't get ahead of this sort of thing, it gets ahead of you pretty quick, and I think we're there, so. I wouldn't be, if they were not only looking at, you know, revamping our fee structures substantially, but also, um. You know, looking at what we can do to accelerate the process. I mean, I think our people know enough that when they get out in the field, they 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 have enough experience and the wisdom accumulated from experience to know. This is, this is just someone that's gonna get worked out, or this is someone that's never gonna do this, and I I think they ought to have some. Discretion to accelerate the process, just for the benefit of all the people living around them.
Which which they do, but again, like I said, sometimes that doesn't fix the problem, it just. Expedits it to going to a citation, which doesn't, still doesn't fix the problem sometimes.
Even if you go through citation, how long does it typically take to work through that entire process?
It it really depends on the court process, so, um, it's not, it's not quick.
No, I mean, I got called out for jury duty on a compliance issue, and then they finally agreed to take care of it. And we didn't have to serve, so. Okay, well, I I would encourage them, I would encourage you to look at anything we can do to accelerate it, and to add something more than just a simple citation that. Somehow to get something from the court of the way of an order to be fixed. So that they'll just get fined and nothing happens, if if that's legally possible, I I reverse naming for Bob if that's something that we can do. That's all I have.
I put something to tag on to him, are you changing topics?
No, I'm staying on top.
Okay.
Thanks to Abby, Bruce and Jim, I was wondering, uh, since a lot of this is involved with the. The water department, before that transfer occurs in doing. Can you just not, just shut off the water and remove the things you repair?
That's yours decision, not mine.
And we want to move into the house.
Yeah.
Uh, to be clear, life safety, they're not allowed to live in the house, if they live in the house, that creates another sequence of events in terms of. Moving them out, right, in terms of what's about them, but, um, so there is a catch there. So it's the economic decision, I mean, she mentioned the one really difficult one, there's an economic decision about. Until they get the life safety taken care of, they can't start drawing rent, right, so there's an economic reason to take care of the problem. Um, but to her point, some of the other things still may just. Take a while, if ever necessarily, cause they're not, in this case, life safety.
Right.
But they're property code issues, and as you know, cause you work with it, there's, that's a different type of code.
One of the things that I took away from Hager's conversation was that he was noting that we tend to be awfully polite. And I'd really like to, you know, kind of to your point about shutting off the water, take a little bit harder line toward non-compliance. No, I I mean, I, you know, I know that we we've worked on a culture in the in the city to. You know, be very accommodating, but maybe this is a case where it may not be exactly, or the best way to. To go about doing business. Kevin?
Um, yeah, I I. I think your point's, uh, this makes me laugh, but I I I'm sorry, but that's awesome, um, but. Um, I I think I I hear what what Mayor is saying in the sense that like, you know, maybe we do have repeat offenders, when, you know, we do have to take that hard-nosed approach. And and, you know, and I think that's not, I I love the culture of the city that we have, and I love that we have a. You know, an approach of, you know, maybe there's some ignorance there, or, you know, an education piece that needs to be instilled, and. I I think that our citizens appreciate that thoughtfulness, but when you've got a repeat offender that knows what they're doing, and they're still doing it, I have no problem taking more hard-line approach. Be like, hey, you know, drill, come on, this, you're you're taking advantage of kindness at this point, and so. You know, I obviously I'm not gonna get in the weeds and tell you how to do your job or in your department or anything like that, but I definitely understand Mayor's point about. Making sure that we take care of those that that are, you know, new to the city, or looking for understanding, or just trying to. You know, find a way versus people that are just, honestly, we just have some people that are just jerks sometimes, and. And it's frustrating, and and I think they do take advantage of kindness, so I'd like to make sure we maintain that line.
Sure, and our and our way of expediting it, which is very nice in the process, but, um, our way of expediting it is just to go to a citation sooner. Right, because we work with people, and that's what we talked about with the code compliance presentation in the first place was. We, our goal really is to work to achieve compliance, and so we give them time to try to make, get to that compliance, so. Right now, the only legal recourse I I know that we have is to go to a citation sooner, which we do. Um, I I don't know what our legal options are beyond that, but we can certainly ask Bob if there's any other. Um, legal recourse that, I mean, that recourse that we can do legally, um, to make an impact, so. Well, I'll certainly ask that question.
Brianna?
And I think that's where I was gonna go, and one, asking Bob if there was any other legal recourse, uh, recourse, and the other one was, um. As you're doing this surveying of other cities, is to find out if there's anything they might be doing or have done, and it didn't work. They've done and it has worked, right, so that we're not reinventing the wheel, maybe there's something that we haven't thought of.
And and there, I will tell you, there are a lot of cities that it's, you have a violation, here's your citation, there is no warning, there is no. Time to to gain compliance, so, I mean, if that would be easier for us, honestly, if that's the direction we wanna go, but like I said, it. It doesn't always necessarily fix the situation, a citation doesn't always necessarily fix it, so.
Sure, one more question. Sure, here, so what about the HOAs? Or do do, is there any, do the HOAs have the ability to enforce any of this?
Interestingly enough, what we are finding more and more is that HOAs want us to fix it for them. They don't want to be the ones to enforce anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's it's becoming an issue, because not only do they want us to enforce our rules, they want us to enforce their rules. We have to remind them on a regular basis that we cannot enforce their rules, um, so it's, HOAs are. Are a great thing, but they are not as interested in in doing that legal enforcement anymore. They want the city to do it for them.
Thank you, Kevin?
Or, I'm sorry, Randy, just now.
Yeah, I I'm I'm curious, because some cities find that no enforcement office, by the way. On on your worst day in your job. You're still not a code enforcement, you're still not having to do the code enforcement, I mean, I just wanna throw that out, what these folks do is amazing. And I'm curious, because I hear other cities tell me, the the code enforcement officers from other cities. I hear stories about being threatened, being verbally abused, being, um. I mean, I I heard one story in a.
I mean, I, I heard one story in a city in the North Texas area, the code enforcement officer stood. Uh, took a step on the porch. And heard the shotgun player behind the door. Um, with a, with a, a warning, this is, you know, you, you don't even have to ten, you've got like, like five or something. So I'm curious, do your.
Yes.
Folks have to deal with that?
Yes.
We, we've actually, uh, had base support. In some, in some situations.
So realize that, you know, in, in one respect. Going straight to citation is easier. And it's in another respect, going straight to citation, um, can prove that is, can be an escalation point. Um, so there's a fine balance there that these folks have to do. And like I said, I, I don't see how it. Thank you. Thank you was not anywhere close to adequate to what you, you were talking to.
And maybe not to get into personnel, are we, are we getting in the blues?
Yeah, one, so I said, we have three code compliance officers, one, um, is dedicated to rentals and two are for the rest of the city. One of those two just left. Um, she had a baby and, um, resigned. So we really have one for everything else in the city right now. We are trying to hire that one back.
It's difficult. It's a.
But it is.
Iron market.
It's a beautiful thought. Yeah.
Cause there is a certain personality to your point, but there is a certain personality even in that realm. And if you get the wrong personality in that, y'all's phone will be ringing up the law.
Yeah. I mean, because the easy answer is to say, you know, I love the person who used to repossess cars. Uh, and, and that's, that creates a problem in and of itself.
I did that once. Nobody wants me to do that.
All right. Any other questions? So let, let me ask counsel from thank you. Um, again, this work session, we can't vote, but I'm, I'm sort of curious because it's gonna show up as we move into the budget priorities. I'm, I'm sensing from your conversations that one. This is. Code compliance around the rental program is something that you're interested in. Yes. Okay. And second, that you are. Not to say that it can't be done without adding additional staff, but if you saw additional staff. Showed, that showed up in the budget request along with your appropriate reasons why. No one, no one is gonna be surprised that whether you approve it or not is a different story. But no one would be surprised at that. Is that correct? Well, that if, if it showed up that they needed extra staff to get this done.
But I would prefer that we go try the other, um, venue first.
Absolutely. Yeah. By, by the way, I mean, I, your, your staff does such an amazing job of finding things. In different ways to do things. Um, it, it truly is, um. You know, like I said, if. If, if you all fully realize how well your staff does and how much good they do for you, it's, uh. You know, you wouldn't give Mike a raise because he doesn't do much of it, but the rest of them, right?
That's exactly right.
I mean, yeah, I'd like, I, I certainly don't see that we can do what we have to do with the staff that we have, but I also think that we should look at. Projecting what the fees should be to cover the cost of the additional compliance, because the. You know, the homeowners that aren't, the landlord aren't the ones that are causing the problem. And I think the people that are causing the problem that are renting the property is commercial operation, the ones that should pay the cost of the rent. And the compliance inspections. So, I, you know, I don't mind additional staff being in the budget, but I'd like to see the fees offsetting the cost of.
Pay for itself.
I mean, particularly institutional. Landlords, you know?
I, I want us to be very clear that. Cities are still gonna pay for it, cause all they're gonna do is just pass on those costs. And that's just something just for us to just be aware of that. More than likely, if we do increase fees, that will get passed along. I'm not saying everyone would do that, but I'm not saying we're going down a long path, but. Just to be very clear that any additional fees or anything are probably gonna be passed on to the. The, the renter, sorry.
Or they'll sell them on, and someone will buy it.
Just, uh, just, you know, those, those guys are, are the, the, the landlord where they're gonna absorb those fees, they're gonna, they're gonna pass them along. So let's just. Make sure that when we look at those fees and those things that. We have that in the back of our head that, that, that is something that would potentially be passed on to, you know, someone potentially trying to move in. You know, to a community, to a community with a young family and things like that. So I just wanna make sure we look at the, the, the whole picture realistically.
Yeah, but. But, but I want to say. I understand the cost might be passed off to someone else, but at the same time, if you don't have a concrete. Um, I guess a way to make sure that our staff is not overworked or if it's not, you know. There's gotta be something there, right? For sure, because we just can't have this routine inspection without any consequences. Right? And, and, and so also I, I think that just making it efficient for the staff. If it's one less inspection, and that's just one, you know, that's the time that they could spend on something else. So we should go that route first. Even though the, the, the cost might be passed on to someone else. I mean, I, I know a lot of cities. And they, they actually do put higher value on if you actually get the citation and have to go to court and, and that's what they try to avoid, cause. You don't wanna be, you know, if you're saying you're gonna pass off a thousand, two thousand dollars to your tenant. Of course, the tenant's gonna have a second thought and you, you might lose that tenant too. So, but it'll make you act on the master. So.
And I do wanna be clear, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with any increase of fees or anything. I just wanna just be aware and thoughtful of that part of the problem.
And, and, and the staff, the policy of being. So, you know, the, the renters already have the, the bad owner, but. At the same time, we can't just spend time going back like over and over just because there's no consequence for them to be. You know, having the staff, the inspector, co-compliance, compliance back again and again. So. Again, not most cities, they have a lease inspection fee and that's the reason why they're not getting it done before there's been sectioned.
Also realizing my understanding is I've looked at your property and just sort of asked Mike and asked some questions. You, you have a few institutional investors here. And you have some individuals. Who, uh, are individuals and probably members of the community that own a number of properties here. So, I mean, just counsel be aware of that, that you're probably not gonna hear from the PE firm based out of California. But you might hear from the person who's been. Slowly buying rental homes, rental property in Capel for the last twelve years who. Might be sitting next to you in a chamber of conversation. All right, let's move on to, uh. The drought contingency plan. The drought contingency plan. Uh, as, as, as we watch the rain steadily come down.
Yeah.
Let's, um.
All good. Good.
Interesting.
I don't have a presentation. I'm just talking.
The answer is no, that's not it.
No, that's not mine. That's not mine.
All right. We'll turn it off.
Oh, thank you. All right. Thank you, Brian.
Especially home school.
Thank you.
Don't know too.
Something, something you can touch. Give me that. Wait, get ready. Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, this item tonight is related to the drought contingency plan as it relates to water consumption, which is mostly irrigation in this case. So this is, this is a discussion and I will provide our recommendation at the end. And just a little bit of background and reminder, we are wholesale water customers, Dallas Water Utilities, also known as DWU. And we are required to revise and submit our drought contingency plan and conservation plan every five years to the state as well as to the city of Dallas. And since we purchase water from DWU, we must adopt the conservation, we must adopt conservation provisions relatively consistent with those applied in Dallas and the other cities in the region. The current drought contingency and water conservation ordinance identifies goals, triggers and responses based on water usage thresholds and operational considerations. As you recall, last summer, we experienced record high temps and no rainfall for about two months. We initiated stage two in early August, which was the first time in about ten to twelve years that we did that. And once we did that, most people complied with still use close to our max daily per day of delivery available. This year, we have budgeted for an increase in our daily max from eighteen point five M V D million gallon per day to nineteen point five million gallons per day. Now, our current ordinance has five stages of response with specific watering restrictions for each stage. What I have passed out in front of you, one of them is, the first one was a chart showing the current ordinances in other cities comparing their responses to each stage. You can see that larger cities have a mandatory two-day watering, uh, restrictions, um, year, year round for stage one. And Capel, as well as some of the other smaller cities, in stage one involves voluntary reduction and no watering between the hours of ten AM and sixteen. Now, all cities are required to update their plans this year and it is anticipated the majority of them will be going to a two-day watering, uh, year round. So to fulfill contractual obligations with DWU in alignment with the other cities. We are considering transitioning to a two-day week irrigation year round for stage one. Now, the next sheet shows our current ordinance as well as two options that are being considered. A voluntary two-day year round with a mandatory two-day between nine first and September thirty. Or a voluntary two-day a week year round for stage one. And as well as changing the no watering times from nine AM to six PM. And then stage two becomes mandatory two-day and then stage three becomes mandatory one day. And this also reduces the number of stages from five to four. So our preference would be option one, which would help us with our summer demand and possibly prevent us from increasing our daily water supply. Now, this decision takes into account the need for water conservation, compliance regulations and the experience and habits related to irrigation. The experts for Texas AgriLife recommend that watering two days a week or at about one inch in total is all the yards need. So our next step will be to bring in ordinance for your approval in April that will go into effect October first. And we will continue this summer with our existing stages and we will implement our current stage two beginning May first. And we, we will begin to educate over the course of the years that will be, we will be ready for next summer, twenty twenty-five. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Why would you not wanna implement sooner?
The, the reason or the thought behind that is to, to educate the folks, people. The habits that we see in Capel, the amount of watering that we, um, experience in our yards today. For many years, we've been accustomed to, right now, voluntary, uh, restrictions that everybody waters every day. Uh, our current, our current ordinance goes to three days first and then two days and then one day. And so, uh, with, with the current habits, we would like to educate folks that it only takes two days. To, to maintain your yard and you don't have to water every day. And so we figured it would take us, um, about a full year or so. Maybe less to, to educate and, and get the folks on board to begin the two-day water. We could go sooner. That, that was the reason behind the thought.
Do we, uh, coordinate a way of doing when going to. Is the requirement restriction?
Yeah.
Cause I think some of them actually find their, the, I guess the residents said their yards are, you know, not at the standard percentage.
That's, and that goes back to part of the communication that we're gonna have with, with all, with HOAs and residents. So we do coordinate, uh, well in advance. One of the first. Stages, one of the first steps we take is internally with the city department. So with our, our parks irrigations and city facilities. We cut back the irrigation and then we start hitting the commercial facilities as far as. Before we implement, going into stage two, we have those conversations with ourselves and then with larger commercial, uh, facilities. And then the HOAs to say, look, we're, we're about to reach a stage. We ask that you start cutting back your watering through this fountain, or we will have to implement in stage two, we will be restricting.
We, we kind of think it's fine, but I'm talking about when we actually put, I guess, citation or warnings or even fines for the homeowners.
Right.
Because they're, they're not able to water. I know you said two days is what's, you know, needed to maintain, but some of the yards might be, might not be maintained a little too late.
And again, and again, it goes back to the education and, uh, training. So what that does is it trains the yard to be able to be established based off of two days. So your roots get trained. I, I'm not, I'm not a, what is it, an agrologist or a turf manager, but, but. It does, uh, it, it does take time and it does help train your yard, um, to establish the roots based off two days, but it, it doesn't happen overnight. So that's what we're talking about. Uh, over time, educating folks to do that. So, and, and we, we would educate the HOAs, this is the route that in order to conserve and to maintain our water supply. Um, they may have to look at the restrictions as far as the HOA and how green this grass really needs to be.
Yeah, I just don't want the residents to be hit with some sort of notice that because they're compliant with, you know, conservation and.
What are the criteria for each stage?
So it's, it's, there's several different things that trigger, um, the stages. So for, for stage one, um, there, there could be, there could be a couple of things. One could, you could have a problem and say, hey, we need all our customer cities to, to go into your next stage. Or it's a percentage of how much water we, we use in a, in a day. So that's what happened last summer. So for stage one, uh, if the water demand exceeds ninety percent of our current max flow rate for five consecutive days. Then that will trigger that stage. Um, the other option is if, if our ground storage tanks over at the, the Village Parkway pump station, that we have the two ground storage tanks. If they don't recover for two consecutive days, then we go into stage one. And so it, it kind of goes from there. So from ninety percent to ninety-five percent to a hundred percent. Uh, as far as max flow rate provided. And then it goes from, uh. Five consecutive days to four consecutive days to two consecutive days for the ground storage tank. So. The more frequent that we use the water and the tanks don't recover is, is when we end up going to the stage. Or if we had a catastrophic event, power failure like we did last summer, that's me. But that would go straight into stage five for that, for that event.
So in addition to making a reservation on one of these options, are you also gonna address the, uh, the eighteen and a half million?
Per day? That, that is correct. So part, part of the discussion, so currently we are working with our consultants to develop this maintenance consideration and drought contingency plan. And part of that is looking at the overall water consumption versus our current daily demand take or current take. And then what does it look like if we take that extra million gallons, uh, after we have budgeted for this, this one year?
So the ninety, ninety percent of eighteen million, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. That's stage one, then ninety-five percent towards, and that has to be consistent of by mid current.
We hit that last last obvious.
And I, I just wanna follow up also on your, I guess you, you call it education. Because some people think, okay, you know, it's down to one day, so now I'm gonna go there and double up my time. It's doing maybe five minutes or ten minutes, maybe now it's twenty, thirty minutes. Um, which I see some of the places that they do run for quite a long time and it just doesn't make sense, but that's part of the.
That's part of the education about how much water your, your yard actually needs per week and how much. There's, there's a lot of great tools out there that can, um, help you determine how much water your yard needs and how much each irrigation zone should run. And so we have a, a team that's working on putting together all this education. It's all, it's all out there. We're just gonna compile it together and provide it as part of our education plan.
And that will be available by, what, the city website or what?
Probably in several locations, city websites, um, we'll probably work on a communication plan. We're definitely gonna work on a communication plan to get it out on social media and wherever else we need to.
Think about sending to a water bill?
Yep, that definitely water bill.
Is. So this doesn't get implemented for another, what's the next fiscal year, right?
So the order could go into effect October one and so, um. Really, so what we would probably do is give some break period between October one through to next summer.
Yeah.
And then next summer really, really enforce it.
Next summer. But how does that correspond? Are we still gonna try to stay under the eighteen and a half million gallons for this year? I guess where I'm confused, if we're gonna go ahead and make a move like this. Why don't we do this and try to not take on an eighteen and a half million gallons?
That is, that is our goal. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Cause I would hate to pay for the next million and then conserve it.
What, what we're planning on doing this year is something we haven't done before is we're gonna go ahead and implement stage two beginning May first. Which is the three-day week watering, um, I think it's May first. But we're gonna implement it ahead of time and so that it would help us gauge. That we can, we can make it through the summer without having to take that buck, cause we, you know. We feel that if we, if we do implement this. Cause we, you know, you feel that if we, if we do implement this, that we will be able to make it through, uh, for a time period to, to not have to take it. But knowing the population increase and with commercial, uh, development, at some point, we do feel we're going to have to take that million gallon.
It was still eventually needed.
Eventually needed.
So just FYI, I did go to two-day a week watering several years ago.
Good.
Um, under the recommendation of Agrolite. And it did take my yard about a year to recover. Um, not recover to adjust to it. And you do water for a longer period of time when you do that. You're, you're basically soaking the ground, letting the water soak down. And the, the, when he talks about the turf adjusting and growing the roots, the roots actually do grow down deeper where the water's retained.
When I, when I see water running down.
Well, that's because they don't have their stuff set right. That, that happens too, you know? I see like just.
Part of the conservation education, we're looking at, at ways to help folks with their irrigation. Um, we live, we live in Lewis, and Lewis has been two-day, two-days for, for years and we have a smart controller and it, it helps. And so we're looking at options that we can, uh, provide to residents on, on how we can help them learn about their own control and like irrigation system or how to better, um, make their system efficient so it doesn't run everywhere.
And they can automatically turn off when it rains.
Yes.
So, yeah, good things.
But just to follow up, um, I do have one of those Ratchio.
Yep.
Sprinkler controllers and it is pretty nice to have it caught into the internet. You, you have on here nine AM to six PM.
Yes, so.
So that's just an hour or is there really that much usage in that nine to 10?
So that doesn't allow us to refill an hour early. It started filling our tanks. So every hour is about 800,000 gallons that we can fill. Um, so in the peak times, it's, that's 800,000 gallons we need.
So people actually appear to the nine AM cutoff, they, that would actually.
Correct.
No, cause I believe some of the other cities, it's, it was like nine to eight.
So, yeah, some do nine to eight, some do 10 to six, like we're doing 10 to six. So like I said, every city, uh, has to, uh, update their conservation plan this year. And so we anticipate and we're coordinating and communicating with other cities as we go through our plan to see what everybody else, cause I think everybody is going to, they're becoming more strict on their, their usage. Um, we're understanding up north, uh, uh, North Texas municipalities, well, they're going to one day a week for most of their cities. And so, um, but yes, the nine AM does give us that hour to fill an extra 800,000 gallons.
Do we need to go to nine to eight? Do we need to go that, do this?
But.
Does that give us any advantage or help us at all?
We are going to look at that as we look at this and it's, it's a possibility. We don't think so, but we are looking, we're going to look at that.
So we're going to expect to see that ordinance, um, your recommendation come forward to me in, in April.
Do you have a copy of that, um, legislation, Chief Senator?
From the state for about a conflict.
Yeah.
Any better than anything else?
No, it's.
You don't have to.
I don't have to.
Um, another question, I, I think, uh, several members of the council received an email from a citizen about smart controllers and stuff like that. Um, you know, the smart controllers, like I, I have the, the Ratchio system as well. I'm not, uh, obviously endorsing nearby, go out and get a Ratchio. I know there's several other brands out there, but, um, you know, part of the, the conservation is, has, has fascinated to look at like, you know, potential rain, you know, like this one citizen mentioned about, you know, upgrading the smarts, um, controllers and, you know, some sort of like, there was, I mean, you know, we have our, our, our smart cities board and so I, I would love to explore a bit more of that. I think the, the great thing about that system is that when it rains, you know, uh, it gets a signal from the internet and it, it just stops my, my irrigation. So with this raining kind of time that we've had, my controller hasn't been running and this is at my business and my home as well. So I would love to encourage more citizens to take advantage of these digital platforms. Um, and I think that that is a very easy way for us to kind of pour it forward and set it and forget it, if you will, like, and, you know, make it happen. So I would love to see some sort of exploration on the conservation side with smart controllers and some kind of progress.
So we have, we, we have a team that's working on technical rebates or something, something similar to where we're looking at controllers. Other cities do this. Uh, controllers for smart controllers, your free irrigation checks or irrigation checks for folks that don't know how to use irrigation or the controller or, you know. Uh, so we're, we're exploring options in order to help educate and, um, entice people to, to switch to the smart controllers.
Well, I, I just, I would be very much in favor of providing some funding for that, uh, for the rebate programs to be able to do that.
We're looking at adding water to your fund and so.
Oh, okay. Um, uh, you know, any, all funding mechanisms would be, would be good to look at, but just want to make sure we throw that out there.
We can only, we can buy everybody one of those tractors that go on the hose, just goes around the arc.
I want to know how you do it at your house.
You ever seen that? Follow me with the installation.
Um, Kevin, I just want to ask you about the, the Ratchio, um, cause I have another brand. Does it work off the, um, the weather that you're getting from DFW airport?
It, it allows you to select, uh, local, uh, uh, weather stations and stuff. So it, it's not a D W, but there are several around and you can just pick the closest one. Uh, you put in your address and it, it recommends like the closest one to your home.
Yeah, cause I was wondering if we somehow facilitate and have a weather station just right there in the ci- you know, in the heart of the city that like the time to, unless you found one.
We do, we do have several weather stations in, in the community that I believe are, you're able to, um, at least put in the location and it'll go, it'll feed off of that weather station.
Okay.
Yep.
I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I, I get a little alert. I actually just had one while we were in this meeting, but like, you know, point, you know, four inches of rain expected skipping next run. And so it, it looks at that. So I just think the, the more we can be on the forefront, I, I think about how, how awesome our smart water meter project was and how accurate that, you know, that, that our, our water bills, if we can do this on the irrigation side. And I, I'd love to see residential and I'd love to see, you know, businesses being able to participate in this as well because we know our, our businesses can be some of our heavy hitters. So if we can look into that, I, I'd really love to see that.
I don't have any of that, so if you ever need to get a pig, like.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Counsel, we're through everything and, um, we're through the agenda. Let me talk a little bit about what's going to happen tomorrow. Uh, first off, we have, uh, we will reconvene at eight 30 AM. Uh, we will have breakfast here, I'm assuming around eight, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, so we will have breakfast here around, around eight AM. Uh, tomorrow, we will go until we're done. Um, but I would anticipate, considering the agenda for tomorrow, we will have, um, you know, I think you're two and a half, three hours probably. I mean, so I, that, that's what I, what I'm working through for agenda. I think that we should be able to get through that. The budget counted pretty easily. Future calendar, council considerations is fairly easy. Um, any additional items? That would be really up to you. That would be items that you think that we want to, you want to make sure gets thrown in the budget. Just realize, I'll say this again tomorrow, over the next several months, you'll have several opportunities to go. I think we ought to consider that, uh, in the budget. So this will be the first time that you are asked that question. I'll remind you of that again tomorrow. Uh, we'll spend some time on debt modeling, um, and talk a little bit about the budget. A few of you mentioned to me about wanting to talk about revenue and modeling and how do we move forward? Uh, we can do that in the morning, uh, as part of that conversation. So that's what tomorrow looks like. Any other questions about, was tonight, where's your wife? So, good. By the way, thank you for a great job on the food and the, and the space and staff, all great job. Um, Mayor, could you get back to you?
Awesome. Thanks, everybody. Um, it's eight 30, so we're pretty up on schedule. Um, got a good day tomorrow scheduled, so look forward to seeing y'all back in the morning. And with that, there'd be no further business for this body. We're adjourned at eight 30.